Please call the roll.
Mr. Frere?
Here.
Mr. Latif?
Here.
Ms. Osterlich?
Here.
Mr. Daly?
Here.
Mr. Green?
Here.
Mr. Hoke?
Here.
Chairman Goodman?
Here. The first order of business would be approval of the minutes from the last meeting and on line sixty-seven of the minutes where it says Chairman Goodman asked if the difference in size was due to standard materials bought, that should say standard size materials. So I would ask if we could have that change to the minutes and if there's a motion with regard to the minutes with that amendment.
I'll make a motion.
Motion has been made. Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I would ask if we could please call the roll.
Mr. Frere?
Abstain.
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Ms. Osterlich?
Yes.
Mr. Daly?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Hoke?
Yes.
Chairman Goodman?
Yes, the motion carries. But ask if the clerk could please call the first case?
The appeal of Eric Weiner, 228 Webster Lane, Niskuna, New York for variance from section two twenty dash eighteen A three, section two twenty dash eighteen B three B, and section two twenty dash thirteen Schedule IC of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna to construct a five hundred square foot garage and porch on the property noted above. The property is located in the R two medium density residential zoning district. Section two twenty dash eighteen A three states unless otherwise specified accessory structures shall not exceed fifteen feet in height. As proposed, the garage would have a height of twenty-five feet. Therefore, a ten-foot building height variance is required. Section two twenty dash eighteen B three B states that the required side and rear yard dimensions for major accessory structures shall be the same as applies to the principal building as defined a major accessory structures or detached accessory buildings or other structures in excess of one hundred and twenty square feet. The garage and porch at five hundred square feet is a major accessory structure. Section two twenty dash thirteen Schedule IC establishes the side setback requirement as fifteen feet. As proposed, the garage and porch will be located twelve feet from the side property line. Therefore, a three-foot side yard setback variance is required. Nine notices were sent out, zero responses.
Okay. Sir, if you could please state your name and address and what your application is and the reason for it and what efforts you made to look into options that wouldn't require a variance?
My name is Eric Weiner, 2228 Webster Lane, Niskuna. My proposed garage is to provide storage space to accommodate a large truck or a boat on trailer. And the height of the bay would be fourteen, thirteen and a half to fourteen feet. The design would match the style of the house. The roof pitch is steep, twelve over twelve. And so that forces the height up considerably. And that's the reason for the height. The location of the building is going to be dependent upon where a buried tree stump is that not really going to know about until we start digging. In an effort to accommodate the size of the garage without having to rip out a stump that we might encounter, we would like to have the ability to use the, to put the corner into the setback area by up to three feet. And so it's a contingency, if you will. And when I had the garage design, we saw that that stump was probably only known to myself. And so I made the application for that. So those are my reasons. In addition, I have some additional documentation. I've asked for and received letters, the three abutters and two abutters, two abutters to my property. And they have all signed in support of the garage. I'd like to give the original to the secretary.
Yes, if you can give the originals to the clerk.
Excuse me. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Sir, if you could set forth on the record why you would, I know you stated that you needed the roof height because you wanted a slope with a fourteen-foot bay. Why would you need a fourteen-foot bay and if a lower bay would, could be used so that you wouldn't need a ten-foot variance?
Well, the height of the bay allows for the boat to be, if the boat's placed in, which is one of the, one of the purposes, allows the boat to have its roof erected within the garage for maintenance and for cleaning. The ability is also there to raise a vehicle on a lift if necessary. And it is the roughly two feet higher than the existing attached garage. The attached garage is twelve-foot high ceiling. So the fourteen-foot height is there to be able to conduct really hobby, support and maintenance.
Okay.
Mr. Weiner, along the lines of that, about how tall is the boat with the canopy on it and including the trailer approximately?
About thirteen feet.
Okay.
Are there any other garage, detached garages in the neighborhood or sheds that have a twenty-five-foot height?
Not to my knowledge.
Mr. Weiner, I'm interested in the location on your property. I did do a site visit and it looks like your property is actually quite large.
Yes.
So needing a setback to me, I wonder if there's other places on your property where you could place it. But of particular importance, when you talk about bringing a trailer in and out, say with the boat on it, this location seemed to be in line with your driveway. So that, to me, made sense. But if you could expand upon why exactly in this spot you need to place the garage?
Well, the location of the forward-facing wall at that, at this point, in other words, where it's placed, leaves the rest of the area around my turnaround area on my garage available to throw snow. Placing it along any other portion of that turnaround area would mean that I'd have to blow snow in two different directions. It would allow me to maintain the access, you know, through, throughout the winter. It is at the edge of the existing pavement. I really did not want to have to put more pavement in. And so it's a convenient place.
Thank you.
Got a quick question. Mr. Weiner, you mentioned the lift. Can you tell me a little bit about the lift, your intention, fixing cars?
No, no, it's hobby.
It's a hobby. So would that lift be one of those like you see in garages or would it be, what kind of lift we're talking about?
If I decide to put one in, it would be probably a four-post lift that had the ability to raise a vehicle up about six feet. Obviously, I couldn't do that with a, with a high vehicle or a, or a boat. But that's an option that I would feel that I have if I choose to place a lift. And that's currently not in the plans, but it's an option.
The only reason I'm asking, because you did mention earlier that you're going to have possibly a lift in there. So my curiosity is if you do have a lift, what is usually the requirement of the heights if you have a lift?
It's depend, the manufacturers that sell the four-post lifts base that on what the heights of the actual vehicles are. And so I'm, I'm thinking six feet is, is probably the upper height of a vehicle and that one could fit under as well as one beyond.
So would, would you say a fourteen feet or twelve feet would do it for the lift?
Well, the fourteen feet is to allow for the possibility of erecting the, the top on the boat. So it, it, it isn't specifically to justify just one entity. It's essentially a hobby space with, with flexibility.
I understand the hobby, but we're just trying to figure out other ways that you could have that garage and still do your hobbies and limit the heights a little bit. So you said you have another garage next to it and it's, what's the height, twelve feet, you said?
The bay, the bay is twelve feet at maximum and there are three beams that are about fourteen inches thick running beneath it. So, so there's really not a full ten-foot.
So there's not enough room to be able to do what you want to do?
No. And that's an attached garage that already exists. This is across the way from the attached garage.
Okay, so that's going to be a separate out loop. How far is that going to be from the other garage?
Thirty, thirty-five feet.
Thirty, thirty-five feet. Okay, I have another question on the contingent, finding the tree where it fits and possibly you're not going to need. Is that what you're saying? That possibly you don't need that three feet?
I may not need to use the, to put the corner into the setback. I'm looking at the worst-case condition right now. I can't explore it. And so I have, I have some flexibility. If it's not needed, I don't need it. But I won't know that until after I start digging and then it would be a self, a self-imposed there, you know, need for variance. So I, I really want, you know, want, want to make it very clear from the outset that that might happen.
So you're telling us that if you encounter the stump, you can't take the stump out?
Correct.
Why?
The driveway would be damaged severely. There's a large, a large willow tree that was taken down a number of years ago.
Where was the willow tree in connection with the garage?
Well, in connection with the.
Excuse me, in connection with the driveway?
It, it's, it probably is half under the driveway and half under, and half into where the garage is. That, it, it certainly isn't in those pictures. And that's the problem. I don't really know where it is. And again.
Just trying to reconcile, as I look at, at this picture right here.
Right, that's the one view from the, from the driveway.
Right, but you've got the schematic or the shadow of the, of the new garage. Is that in the location, the preferred location without the bearing?
That's correct.
So are you saying that the willow tree is near, I think you called it the turnaround or whatever, in front of your existing garage?
Yes, it's, if you look at this particular picture, it likely would be where the garage door is depicted, the one that faces the attached garage, just to the edge of it, you can see at the right of the picture. And some of it's under the pavement and, and some of it may not be. And it may be sufficiently rotted away in the intervening years that it's not an issue. But that won't be known until we dig.
So I have a question for counsel on this in relation to assuming he's not going to need to do this and, and we approve it to pass and then he doesn't need it. How, how would that work out? I mean, this is two requests he's having here. So when it goes to approve it, do we approve, we can go make a motion on one instead of both and?
Yeah, definitely. So as you pointed out, there's two variances requested. A motion could deal with them together or separately. To my mind, they are different requests, so treating them separately would be totally appropriate.
Okay, thank you so much.
Can you go back to the, the issue of the, the height issue? I believe you said that you wanted to be able to put the roof on the boat while it's in the garage?
Correct.
For cleaning purposes?
Cleaning, maintenance.
Is there a reason that you couldn't do your cleaning and maintenance out? Does the boat fit in the garage?
That's the plan. That, that, it, the ten, there's a ten-foot door in the garage that will house the boat with the, with the canopy collapsed.
Okay, but what, what is the, the minimum height you need for that roof to house the boat with the roof collapsed?
With the roof collapsed, if I were to lower the bay to, to twelve feet, then I would come down to twenty, twenty-three feet.
Well, the reason I ask is because, and I don't have a boat, but if I did have one, Mr. Latif and I had a boat, I would assume that you would need to clean it and maintain it once a year, twice a year? So for us to grant what is a ten-foot height variance for something that happens once or twice a year that could happen outside the garage and then the roof collapsed and taken into the garage would still work, right?
Well, that's a possibility, dependent upon weather. But typically, I would see placing the boat into the garage at the end of the season.
Which is?
September, October. And being able to do the cleaning and repairs over the winter.
How do you do it now?
I don't have a boat now.
So you're talking about getting a boat?
It's a possibility. It's a hobby is, that, that was what I felt covered, covered. This, this is a potential and it is something that I've had in the past, whether, whether I choose to use it for that purpose or not. I think there's, I think there's, I think it's a reasonable thing to be able to accommodate on, on, on the property. The height, as I've indicated in the application, is below but not exceeding the height of all of the houses in the neighborhood. The garage.
This is a garage, not a house.
Well, the height is below or, or equal. It's not above any of the other structures.
Mr. Weiner?
Yes.
Maybe I missed something, but you just say that it's possibly an aspirational goal to get a boat, but you haven't decided on whether you're planning to do that?
Yes.
So the whole conversation about cleaning the boat and when you're taking the boat out, that is based upon something that may or may not happen. And you may use this garage for something completely different. Is that correct?
It, it is true.
Okay, so at the time that you're, I, I would expect there would be a substantial investment for you to build this garage?
Yes.
I would think that you would have some purpose to the garage before you undertook that investment. Is that correct?
The purpose is, is vehicle and, and equipment and, and, and storage. And it's a, it's meant to accommodate a number of potentials.
So outside, outside of the boat, what are the potentials that would require the height?
Well, I, I already talked about the, a vehicle lift with two, with two.
And you don't own a vehicle lift right now, correct?
No, correct.
Do you have one on order?
No.
How do we know, how do you know what the height of the boat is if right now we're dealing with a hypothetical boat that?
I've, I've surveyed the, I've surveyed the field, both vehicles, trucks, large, large trucks, caps, vehicle lift, and this is what developed the bay height.
Is there anything right now that you're looking to store in the garage that you own that, or that you are under contract to purchase?
No.
So you're really looking at a speculative?
Yes.
Venture right now? And just so I'm clear, and I apologize, maybe a little thick tonight, you're permitted a fifteen-foot height limit in the garage. And you're telling me that if the garage height was twelve feet, that would still work?
No, I'm saying if it was twelve feet, which I don't feel it would work, it would not be tall enough for the boats that I've surveyed, I would reduce, it would reduce the height, maintaining the same pitch of roof, which is the critical issue, by two feet.
What if it was fifteen feet?
Well, that exceeds the structural capability of wood, wood walls on a concrete stem wall. So fourteen is, is the top that I could handle. In other words, structurally, that wouldn't work, a fifteen-foot height of bay with standard materials. Two-by-six construction.
Mr. Weiner, I don't live too far from you, by the way. What kind of boat you looking at?
Oh, pontoon, twenty, twenty-foot.
Pontoon boat?
Yes.
Okay.
If you didn't, if, if you, if the, you didn't have a garage, would the boat be stored outside? This potential boat in this potential garage?
I, I don't think I'd want to, to run that storage. I'd, I'd have to arrange for off-site storage, I feel. It would, it just wouldn't be worth bringing it on the property and having it there for several months at a time.
And with regard, if I can, allow me to change the discussion a bit? Thank you for your answer. With regard to the tree stump, forgive me if I seem ignorant, but can't you drill a tree stump out? I mean, no, if you encounter this tree stump and it's a problem, can't you, forgive me, pay for someone to grind it?
Grind it.
Grind it out?
You can grind it to surface. But anything more than that requires a lot of, a lot of digging and tugging. And the, the round stump would have large, excuse me, would have large roots that would cause the driveway to be damaged.
All right, so it, it would be an, correct me if I'm wrong, if the tree stump is an issue, there could be a cost attached to.
Oh, for sure.
Grinding out the tree stump and there could be a cost associated with repairing part of the paved driveway.
Correct.
Do you have any thought or estimate as to the expense that would be incurred if the tree stump were a problem and it were to be ground out and it required part of the driveway to be repaved?
Roughly, I figure maybe another $4,000 in excavation and $1,500, $2,000 in pavement.
Yep, so we'll, just for this discussion, your best estimate would be as best as you can tell as you are here now, about $6,000. How much money, if this, if this board were to grant your request for the variances, how much money would you be spending on building this accessory garage?
The, the estimate is $25,000.
So the proposed $25,000 garage could actually run up to $31,000?
Correct.
If indeed this tree stump were a problem and you removed the stump and repaired the driveway?
Rather than request the, the variance.
What utilities are you planning for the garage vis-à-vis electricity, power, gas?
Electricity and gas, both.
Okay. Plumbing?
Both.
Are you planning on plumbing in there as well?
No. The, both, both of those utilities are out to a generator that's about twenty feet, fifteen, twenty feet away from the, from the structure.
So you would be using power that you're generating?
Well, the, the line ran out to where the generator is. So I'd be using a house power?
Okay.
And, and natural gas, which powers that generator.
You talked about a lift. How many tons is a lift?
Nine.
Huh?
Nine.
Nine-ton lift?
Yes.
What are you going to lift with nine ton?
You can get them in six, seven, nine. Those are the popular sizes for the four-post lift. This, this has the largest base plate to be able to spread the weight across the concrete floor without having to make special provisions on the.
No, I understand, I understand lifts very clearly.
So I'm not, but I don't look at the maximum capacity as ever being approached.
You pour a concrete floor over the tree stump that doesn't get removed. Over time, is that tree stump going to rot away and cause damage?
If, if I don't move the footprint away from that tree stump, correct.
Nine ton. You're going to put your boat in that, right?
I'm not going to do both of them at the same time.
Nine ton will lift a dump truck, by the way.
Yeah, eighteen thousand pounds, empty. But, but again, the dump truck won't fit inside the ten-foot, the ten-foot door, so. It, it is what's made and it's, you know, commercially available and the, the price is reasonable. It's hard to find lifts that don't have that kind of, don't have that kind of structure.
So let me understand something here because I'm getting a little confused about this whole thing. This is all on a presumption, right? You haven't bought anything?
Correct.
You haven't really looked into moving that, removing that stump? Because I had a stump removed and it cost me, I live down the street from you, by the way, and it cost me about $1,200. But what I'm saying here is I don't know what direction to go, to be honest with you. You're talking about a boat? You're talking about a lift? Talking about a nine-ton lift?
I'm really talking.
Talking about?
A garage.
Talking about a garage? You're talking about, but there's, what I'm looking from you is the facts. What are you going to do? Are you going to, you're just looking for us to approve this and then maybe someday you do it, maybe someday you won't? Is that basically what you're looking into?
Mr. Weiner, maybe I can help with the legal issue. I think that Mr. Daly, his, his questions are totally relevant because what this board is charged with is granting the least possible variance. And because there's questions about what the real plan is, it's hard for us to determine what the least possible variance is. So, so I get that your desire for flexibility, but understand that the charge to this board is to figure out how to balance what you want with our code. So the fact the plan isn't solidified makes it harder for this board to do their job.
And I'm not sure with, and correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not sure with a contingency on, for instance, the tree stump issue with the setback, that we can actually put a contingency that, well, if the stump's in the way, you can use it. If not, once we grant it, we can't take it back.
Correct. So if you granted the variance and he used less as far as location of the garage, that wouldn't be a binding requirement on the applicant. There's no way to write it that way. So for instance, if it made the rest of his lot more usable, then he would be allowed to do it regardless of where the location of the tree stump was and the ability to design around it.
And why can we not figure out where the tree stump is now?
Too many years, pavement is over it. The, the stump was taken down twenty years ago, or the tree was taken down twenty years ago.
So you're figuring when you have to, this is, you're, you're going to have to get a backhoe or something to dig the foundation for this garage. You're anticipating that once it starts digging over towards the, the driveway, it's going to hit the stump?
Yes, or not. And hopefully it doesn't. But I'm, I'm betting it's going to hit the stump or, or roots and that's the reason. But I'm betting it's going to hit the stump or roots, and that's the reason for the variance or setback.
I appreciate the letters from the neighbors. I'm just curious, which of the neighbor or neighbors would be most affected should this board grant your request for the three-foot yard setback variance?
As I see it, 2189 Marilyn Estman.
And I take it because you presented to us this letter from Ms. Estman, is that how you say the name?
Yes.
That you had a chance to speak with her about it?
Yes, I've been to each of these and asked whether what I've described here is something that they would agree with. I've given them copies of the pictures that you have, and I've also given them each a copy of the construction plans that I submitted.
And with regard to the request for the variance concerning height, correct me if I'm wrong, are you presenting to us that the height of the proposed garage will not be substantially different from the height of the garage that's part of the home that's already built?
It is 10 feet shorter than the existing garage.
So it'd be less, not more?
Mr. Weiner, will you be able to see the structure between the two parcels? If you're driving on Webster Drive, will you be able to see it through the parcels marked as 75 and 76?
I presume so until the foliage blanks it out. The roof, probably.
Last question from me, Mr. Weiner. What is your possible, the least you can make that garage, the heights, work for you? Do you have to reduce the size of it? Because if you do, let's say if you did the 20 feet, would that reduce also the size so you can eliminate the variance for the side setback?
No. The, as I see it, really would be consistent. The height is really dependent upon the height of the highest wall.
So since everything is a possibility, what would be a possible, least possible request for your heights? I know it's 15, you don't need a variance, you know, you could just
I would say 23 would be the absolute least that this could be constructed and be useful for all of the things I've considered.
And where would that fit with your other garage if you were to go 23?
Instead of being 10 feet below it, it'd be 12 feet below the garage height.
So your other, we talked about your other garage is, the heights is 12 feet already, right?
That is not true. The height of the existing garage is 35 feet.
35 feet, which is, it matches the house.
It matches the house.
Okay, thank you.
What was 12 feet was the size of the bay?
The size of the bay.
Right.
Any other questions from the board? Anything you wish to add, sir?
Well, I appreciate the time to present this.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard for or against the application? Now, is there a motion from the board?
Before anyone makes a motion, just like to point out that there's actually two variances that are being requested. A motion could deal with both of them together or separately. We just need to make sure if you're dealing with them together, that you, in your motion, make it clear that you're making a motion as to both requested variances.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to deal with these separately, and I'm going to make a motion that we approve the setback, the side setback variance. I think that the applicant has appropriately stated, and I realize that it is a contingency, but it's not necessarily one that he can resolve at this point. Obviously, the neighbors have approved or have agreed to or given their blessing to that variance, especially the ones that may be most impacted by it in terms of distance from the setback or from the property line. I don't think that it is substantial. I believe it's three, three-feet side yard setback. I acknowledge that he's not sure about the stump issue, but certainly if it were there, it could create a substantial expense, especially if, once he's digging, he finds out that it's going to impact the driveway, provides him a little latitude to move the garage. I don't think it's self-created, obviously. The need for the setback is because of the issue of the stump. For that reason, I move that we approve the set, the side yard setback variance. Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I second the motion for the three-foot side yard setback variance for all the reasons stated.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I would ask if the court could please call the roll.
Mr. Frary?
Yes.
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Ms. Osterlich?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Hoak?
I would vote no. I'll indicate why I would vote no is that I don't have a clear understanding of what the benefit the applicant is attempting to make with respect to this garage and to split the two variances. It doesn't, it doesn't seem like the applicant can achieve the benefit that, whatever the benefit that he's seeking through splitting the variances. So, and given the fact that I don't think there's a basis for variance, I would vote no on the side setback variance as well.
Chairman Goodman?
I will vote yes for the reasons stated for the setback variance, since I believe the coming to us in advance was in good faith, and I know he's going to have to have some plans and deal with the building department as to where it will be set, but at least he'll be able to make those changes that are required to be made without a delay. And it is an unknown in building, and we do face unknowns in building. That variance is granted, sir.
Okay.
We have a second issue before us. Does anyone wish to make a motion on that issue? I'll be perfectly honest, I'm going to move, the height variance, I'm going to move to that we deny the height variance. I appreciate your candor and your forward thinking in terms of what you're looking to do. You don't own a boat, you don't have a boat, it's something you can't even tell this board that you're getting a boat. You don't have a lift, you'd like a lift, these are all aspirations. I don't see any way this board can grant variances that follow this property forever based on things that we like to do or hope to do. I understand you want to put a lift in, I understand you want to put a boat in. I, the need for the garage, I understand for storage purposes, to be able to do certain things, but I don't see any basis. This is totally, totally self-created. It's extremely substantial, requesting a 10-foot height variance. And to be quite honest, I think you can achieve your goal of having a garage for storage purposes and for other, for a vehicle and other types of things that you actually have without having a variance. So for those reasons, I'm moving that we deny the height variance. Motion has been made. Is there a second on the motion?
I'll second the motion for the reasons stated.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I would ask the court call the roll.
Mr. Frary?
Now, I have to thank
Yes.
Voting yes on the motion.
Mr. Latif?
I'm going to vote yes, but I want to just point out to the applicant that we have passed that the variance for the side, the three foot, and I think with the 15 foot allowed from the town, that you'll be able to still build the garage. So I'm going to vote yes for the motion.
Ms. Osterlich?
I'm also going to vote yes on the motion.
Mr. Daley?
I vote yes on the motion.
Mr. Green?
I'm going to vote yes on the motion, deny the height variance. My primary concern is, is that a lot of the discussion is aspirational, and I'd like the record to reflect that I did do a site visit.
Mr. Hoak?
Yes.
Chairman Goodman?
I will vote yes on the motion, bringing in and incorporating the remarks of the prior people and the time of motion. I'll also state the, we are required to do the least restrictive, or the least variance to allow an individual to meet their needs. The needs here are speculative. I certainly do not encourage people to go out and spend money in advance of getting their, in advance of asking for motions. But here we have had really nothing but speculation, you know, there's not been, we don't have a particular boat that we're going to have, we don't know what lift we're going to use. And I also believe that although the roof height might be lower than the houses in the area, it is higher than any other garage. When you think of, when you're looking at most garages, it's a place to store your car out of the weather, and a 15-foot roof would be able to do that. So with the speculation we have here, the change in character of the neighborhood, I will vote for the motion. But I do want to thank you for your time this evening in coming and presenting to us.
Would you please explain to me the appeal process at this point?
Counsel, come. So this was the appeal of, so your options to take this further would be what's called an Article 78 proceeding, which is an action in, at the trial court level, the Supreme Court level. But I actually want to put one other thing out there, and that is that while further action by this board is foreclosed on this specific proposal, if you came back to the board with something different, they would entertain it. So for instance, if there was a height variance request that was made that was different than this, and some of the issues that the board had concerning what the necessity of the height was were addressed, then that would be appropriate for this board to revisit.
But it does have to be different. It cannot be for exactly the same thing.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
If we could call the next case, please.
The appeal of Eileen James of 1460 Van Antwerp Road, Niskuna, for a variance from Section 220-25B1A of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna, to maintain a six-foot fence on the property noted above. The property is located in the R1 Low Density Residential Zoning District. Fence Section 220-25B1A permits the maximum height for fences located in the front and side yards to be four feet. As constructed, a six-foot fence is located in the side yard, therefore, two-foot fence height variance is required. Nine notices were sent out, one response. We received a response from Ann Hammett, 1467 Van Antwerp Road. In regards to the appeal for the offense variance, Section 220-25B1 for 1460 Van Antwerp, my opinion is the zoning should stay in compliance with the four-foot height on the side of the houses. It is a bad precedent to allow a six-foot fence, which may cause unfriendly views and lower property values. For 50-plus years, I have lived at 1467 Van Antwerp Road and have only the finest remarks for the zoning board. The ordinances have made it a welcoming community. My house is located on a hill across the street from 1460. My view encompasses all properties and fences across the road. Views are important in creating a pleasant neighborhood and maintaining real estate values. Thank you for your diligence and efforts regarding this matter.
Sir, if you could please state your name and address, relation to the applicant, and the reasons for the application, and what efforts have been made to mitigate to reduce the need for a variance?
Certainly. Adam James, 1460 Van Antwerp. I am Eileen's husband. We requested the variance in November of 2018. We actually complied with the variance. There is a stock, a 42-inch fence, which they come stock, so four-foot, but it's 42. It is up. When the inspector came out, he did notice that I did place three panels over that. It's roughly a touch over, it's about 32 feet. November 2018, the neighbor who resides next to us that shares that property line with us moved, and new neighbors moved in and they possess
Sir, talk into the mic, please.
Sorry, is this okay? They possess a pit bull. The first day the residents moved in, the pit bull jumped their six-foot fence that they have that surrounds their backyard. And Mr. Felthausen from the flower shop across the way returned the pit bull. We believe the pit bull may be friendly, however, we are unsure, could not obtain if the pit bull is licensed, if they have homeowner's insurance on the pit bull. And as, we own a mastiff ourself, which is extremely large vehicle, or vehicle, excuse me, dog, that is registered, licensed, has its shots, et cetera. The concern with the pit bull is, pit bulls are prey-driven. If it sees my mastiff, which will bark, and their pit bull does not bark, which makes me concerned, prey drive will open, and then it will jump their six-foot fence, which it cannot will, which, so it certainly can jump the 42-inch fence, which is also offset because the way the property is, there's a minor incline, which means my, the way the slope of the property is, is the 42-inch original fence that is still present actually is lower. So it's probably an easy 36-inch jump, which is nothing for the pit, considering it jumped the six-foot with ease. So upon the day that the pit jumped, I literally went to Lowe's, grabbed three extra panels of six-foot fence and installed them immediately. So the way, on the map, if you can see, where I have the red piece there, so the blue piece is the compliant fence, the four-foot or less compliant fence, where the red begins is the straight line that a butts from the front of the house, and then that section, so just the section or length of my home, that's where the out-of-compliance fence is currently. And so why we did that, again, is to add, because now where the corner kind of comes like this, it provides me the opportunity. So when we come out of the yard, and I'm standing, you know, at that L shape where I says yard, when you're standing there, you can see out to the road, and you can see in that corner where they live, so where the two fences are like this, you can still visually see. So I can see them, they can see us. However, it provides me a little extra protection if the pit jumps, a little extra warning time before I have to take care of the pit bull myself. And so it provides that extra protection, but it doesn't block, doesn't prevent safety. It's over 60 foot from the road, considering the property is 142, but there's still a 22-foot right away, so you're over 60 foot going out. So when they come out of their garage, because their property kind of, it's almost weird how they're, it's about 45, 50 feet away, but their house is almost aligned with our house, like, so the, when you're looking at their gray and lined up with our gray, they're pretty close. So when you, when they're coming out of their driveway, they can, it'll, as if they back straight out, but then soon as they go to turn out, there's no obstruction of any view from anybody at any given time. One, they would come out and they would have no reason, if they looked into the fence, they're still 50 feet, 60 feet, 70 feet from the road. As they approach the road, they still have the clear shot, left to right, 60, 70, et cetera, feet, until they proceed to the edge of their driveway. So from our perspective, I don't see a proposed safety issue, except for, gives me an added layer of protection against the pit bull. And that's basically why we had to, we did it in an emergency situation, and I do have the panels up. I do have the panels up.
Sir, I'm a little confused. Where, where is the pit bull? In relation to this diagram of Van Antwerp, where is the pit bull? I assume it's this house here?
Correct.
And do they have their own fence up?
Their fence goes, if you look at the black, my, start of my thick black line, I would start right with the edge of their house.
Mr. James?
Yes, ma'am, sir.
Why don't you just come up and show us?
fence?
Yes, sir.
Two pieces, two?
Yes. So they, they are a butt. They're literally like this. So when there's, the prior owner installed the fence earlier. We had bought this home January of seventeen. Due to the owner and knowing that with our dog, we wanted to make sure we had a space for our dog, so we had, I had twenty maples to drop. So after I completed the dropping of the trees, this, this summer, in the fall, I installed the fence. So there is a small portion, thirty-two to forty feet roughly, where they do go like this to each other, and then his cuts into his property, and mine still goes along.
When, when you say the pit bull jumped, I assume he jumped, didn't jump that portion of fence that borders yours?
I don't know. I'm assuming he jumped the far side to the neighbor adjacent to them, away two houses from me. I would imagine he got out that side, but I'm not sure.
But he wasn't in your yard?
No, no. I didn't know he was out until Mr. Feldhausen, the owner of the flower shop, came, I came in, and I don't know how he detected which house it was. It's untagged, maybe trial by error.
Do they keep the dog within the fenced yard?
Yes.
And the diagram that you just added on with their fence shows that their fenced backyard is completely beyond, or be, instead of beyond, completely behind the area of fence that's non-compliant.
Correct.
So if the dog is in the fenced yard, how does that section of non-compliant fence provide you any extra protection?
Because, for example, like yesterday, when the children came in and opened the garage, the pit bull came running out and was in the driveway exactly where that fence that I put that's uncompliant. So had I been out, had my dog been out, had my wife been out, if my dog barks, which it will, because it's a mastiff, it will bark, and had that dog decided to make good, it would clearly jump that without even a flinch.
And how often is the dog in the driveway instead of in the fenced yard?
Uh, being we work, that I've seen four times.
Okay. And has the dog ever shown aggressive tendencies against you or your family?
Not that I'm aware of yet.
What's to stop the dog from jumping the blue sections of the fence?
Up front, it's just a little harder. And one, I, I would lay it all the way up the top, but I'm, I'm around, I know safety, I work in holds, I get it. You can't, it's, I mean, one, you, you never, I've never been in a town and city where they let you go over six-foot in front of your house anyway. So it's kinda like, it is what it is there. I've gotta do what I, it's just, it's unreasonable request. So I would never request that. But in essence, yes, certainly could. It just, based on the angles, if we're out in the yard, it provides me a little more time. My wife carries a box cutter when she takes the dog out. That's a little bit of an issue for me, but unfortunately, we'll have to deal with that because they live there and they have a pit bull. But at least I have that little extra bit because of the basing of the slope. And basically, again, like if you were to come out, and the gentleman who did come out and look at it, the way the land is, it's weird, it's, it's like a little hill, and it kinda comes down. So I'm even losing the pieces of the stock fence to be in with. So it's just a small amount, it amounts to about three and a half, four panels, at eight-foot stock length, and it's just a small amount and provides a little extra where the lowest point of the compliant fence would give me.
Sir, just with respect to the, looking at the smallest variance possible, why, I, I assume you exit your home from, there's a, a rear door on your house?
Yes, sir.
Why would it not be feasible to run the additional six-foot panel from the back corner of your house over to where it links up with the existing six-foot fence, and minimize the need for the panel running past the back corner of your home?
So then I would reduce the section that I wish to have fenced off from my dog, cut that down. So what you're, if I'm understanding you correctly, you'd go from my south corner, and I'd go at a diagonal cross, and then that whole section of red, that thirty-four inch there, that's forty feet or so, then I, that would be area where my dog no longer has opportunity to run.
Correct. I understand that.
Et cetera.
But that, that would in fact eliminate, or would, it would resolve your safety concern?
Add a penalty to our, our family and our dog.
I'm just asking you a question.
And that's the answer, sir.
I'm asking a judgment on it. I'm just, just trying to ascertain that would resolve the safety issue.
To me, no.
Well, how would the safety issue continue to exist at that point if you have a six-foot panel there?
So the other issue is, is that I also, they have children, three, two, three, I think, two that go out. So being that my dog is this tall, my dog probably is about that far from the compliant fence. My dog wants, he won't jump, but he'll go up on it if he wants. Their children come to the fence, they're constantly touching the fence, and, and while they wait for the bus, when they come out, and my wife's in the yard, if my dog barks, which it will at everything, they'll woof, woof back at the dog, so they'll antagonize the dog. So there's a second caveat to why I want added protection. Again, it's to protect my dog from them, or their pit bull, my dog from their children. Because if my dog jumps up on it and being antagonized, and they stick their hand over, there's a potential, I highly doubt mine ever would, because he's old and docile, but the potential's there.
Wait, we're, we're talking about, this isn't chain-like fence, right?
No, stockade.
Yeah. And that sidewall of your house is thirty-four feet long?
Roughly.
Mr. James, I did do a site visit, and I'm, I'm curious about the look of the, of the placement of the extra panels up on top of the existing fence?
I need to replace. So what I have is special order. If you noticed, I have a three and a quarter-inch panel around my entire yard, except for the place I replaced. They're five inches wide. That's the only thing they had stock at Lowe's at the time those people moved in. So I bought it and grabbed it, takes about six weeks for that. So in the spring, I will replace the, the thicker one that you saw, you know, it's just three oddball-looking large, they're five, I will replace them when I can have special order and get the thinner matching ones in there.
And will, will the appearance look as if it, the panels of the fence continued in a vertical line instead of more like a patchwork quilt?
For the most part, yes. If you notice, the shorter fence was aligned in two areas. So there was two sections of the compliant fence that you saw, and they're a little off. Because of the pitch, the slope, and the gradient, there's no way I can not make it fully without hanging, having them six-foot off the ground, two-foot off because of the way the ground is. But they'll be as close as I can.
And with the, with the newer panels, is there any, any other fencing in the neighborhood that you've noticed or seen that exists that has panels attached in such a way that is not the typical way?
What do you mean?
Uh, one on top of another.
Like the way I?
In a vertical way.
The way I put the six-foot above the, on top of the four-foot like that?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know, I've never looked in anyone's yard. That's on the inside, so unless you're looking in my yard, you can't see it.
Do you think that the fence with the new, newer panels will look, make the appearance of the neighborhood different because of the fact that you've got two vertical panel, or two panels placed vertically on top of each other?
Well, you wouldn't, because I'm gonna take, if we're granted, I'm gonna take out the, the compliant four-foot and just replace with this, with the six-foot, so there'll be just one line.
I see. So there won't be two sets?
Two sets.
At all?
No. The two sets you've seen are emergency.
Okay. I thought you were saying you were just gonna get a better-looking?
No. I just, the ones I have now are not matching, because that's all that was stock at the Lowe's. However, when I, in the spring, I will be able to redo the special order to get the three-inch, there are six-foot panels, there are three-inch dog gear, and they're very thin, and then I replace. So what'll happen is, everything you went and looked at will be removed in those panels, and the same matching six-foot, three, three-inch panel dog gear will be replaced in there.
So exactly how high is that fencing area right now, using, using the two sets of fencing? One on top of?
The bottom set is irrelevant, because it's underneath, it's forty-two inches. So it's literally like this. You can't, the forty-two-inch fence ends here, and the six-foot fence is like this. So there's, is no bearing on the height.
It's not on top of each?
No, ma'am.
Okay. It's just that extra piece that looks just right?
Literally like this.
The top part.
Four-foot fence, I came in with a six-foot fence, and it looks like that. You can no longer see it.
I get what you're saying, I just, a question for you. I also drove by the property, and the chimney you have in your house, is that the side where the red fence you're talking about?
The chimney's kinda in the middle of the house.
Right.
But it's that side?
But it's, it's on the?
Is it that side? That's what I'm asking.
Closer to that side, yeah. But the chimney's right in the middle of the deck, which is almost dead in the middle of the house.
Yeah, but, here, here.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Gotcha. Yes, yes, sir. Sorry, I was thinking of the large chimney that's in the middle. My fault.
I'm talking about the chimney that?
Correct. There is a chimney, but there's a gas fireplace in there, so I didn't think of it. But yes, that is the side.
That's the side we're talking about?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So on this side, we talking about thirty-four feet, thirty-five feet, that's the width of your house, right?
Roughly.
Of that section, now you said you, you already had the four-feet fence in there, and then you went out and got the six-feet fence, and the six-feet is covering the four-feet?
Right. It's just right on there.
So putting, leaving the four-feet where it is, taking the six-foot like Mr. Hoak was recommending, and putting the six-foot in the back of the house, and then you don't need a variance. Would that work for you? If you have the four-foot where it was, so you still have that little privacy, you're talking about somebody coming and reaching up to the fence and so on, but then put in the six-foot, and also yourself, you were surprised that people not, not many people allow fence in front of the house or to the side of?
Right. Usually they cut at the front of the house. And I, I grew up in Skankie, so you could go six-foot from the front back.
So would that work for you if you were to put the six-foot fence in the back of the house, leave the four-feet foot fence on the side, then you don't need a variance?
Yes and no. So then it would waste my money, because I would remove, so they see the small blue line from my house to the red and blue combo?
Yeah. How, how long is that from the house to, like, if you were, like, you probably lose a couple panels?
Twenty, three, and three and a half-ish, three and three-quarters, so four panels.
Four panels.
Yeah. So I mean, it's like three hundred bucks, but it's just principal. So not only do I have to, I would remove that.
But would that work for you for the safety of your dog and so on?
It would require, it would meet the safety requirement, but it would cut me out of yard for my dog. So it's kind of a?
Okay. But you do have, like, a backyard there for the dog, or, or you don't?
I do. The whole, the whole L-shaped area is the dog's area. That's why we fenced it that way, so we have the L.
How, how wide is that area between the house and the property line with fences?
I believe the physical house to the start of their, to the property line's about twenty feet, and then there's probably, the, the line is pitched, so when the surveyor came, if you're looking from the road as the, as you go, actually, if you go from the back of the property, it kinda cuts in. So truthfully, actually, the top of their driveway, like a foot of it's actually on my property, because the way the line is curved, but no one knew the, right away, so when they did the driveways and the lines. So I'd say it's about twenty feet from my house to my fence roughly. Then they've got a small chunk of grass between their driveway, maybe two to three feet as you go up, and it gets smaller as you get close to the road. So if you give anywhere from, say, four-foot all the way up to two going higher, and then you got another twenty, twenty-five feet to their garage, so it's about twenty-nine feet from the fence to their house, and maybe twenty, twenty, twenty-two feet from the fence to mine.
You would be losing, if you were to put the fence to the back corners, was suggested, you would be losing about twenty-foot of width for that area.
Would say it'd be about, we'll call it twenty by thirty-five.
Okay. Have you spoken to your neighbor with the dog?
I, I play, and I say hello, and I've, you know, I helped snow blow his driveway in the blizzard the other day, because I was worried if it couldn't get out, because they only had a shovel.
Have you spoken to him about the dog?
I have not. I, I'm not sure. I mean, I'm very honest, I, I wonder if they're, when they moved in, we, we weren't sure if they were moving, if they were renting. So the prior owner, who they were, I think friends, we said something to the prior owner about the dog, and his response was, well, we sold it to him, they're not renting. So we're pretty sure he's aware of it, but it appears, we don't know what they're doing with the dog, quite honestly.
But you've never seen anything aggressive with the dog?
Not yet.
Or to a certain extent, we're speculating?
Not speculating, it's a pit bull. If, it's a pit bull. They're prey drive. They are, they are what they are.
It all depends on how they've been bred and reared to a certain extent as well?
Nature's nature, sir.
But?
If that dog sees my mastiff, I can assure you, there's a high probability, its prey drive will kick in.
Has your, has the pit bull ever seen your dog or heard your dog bark?
It can't, because now it can't see my dog because of the fencing that I put up. It's out of compliance. The way the corner is, my, it can't see my dog unless it's, unless they leave their dog just hanging out there, which they have yet. I'm concerning, well, I'm not concerned, I'm actually a little okay with, I think they might be hiding the dog, quite honestly, because when they got out, the kids jumped on that dog the other day pretty quick and rushed it into the house. We don't see it go to the bathroom too often. My wife, it took us two weeks to get a picture of the dog, because we don't even know if they let it out to use the restroom because of the concern that they may, because we, we brought up to the prior owners, you know, hey, you need to have homeowners on that, which is very difficult to get. You need to make sure it's licensed and some of those things. And so those are some ideas we think that may not have happened, so they're, and they, they all kinda talk, and they know. And I'm, I'm a little aggressive, so I let them know my concerns up front, and so I'm sure they were laid back to the new owner.
Have you spoken to the neighbor who wrote the letter to them?
I've said hi to her once in two years. She liked my Notre Dame flags, that was about it.
You haven't spoken to her about this issue?
She never came over, nothing. Like I said, I seen her once, I said hello, I said, I like your flags, that was last summer. She's across the street, up a ways, elderly lady, that's all I know.
Have you seen other six-foot side yard fences?
In, well, not that I drive, I don't look, to be honest with you.
Can I ask a legal question?
I got a question for you. Oh, I'm sorry.
I have a legal question. If we were to grant this variance, what, is there a way to make it conditional that we could require the homeowner to replace the fence? I'm just concerned, I, I've done the drive-by, and it's not the most attractive, the way it is right now, but the way you're describing it sounds like it would be more attractive. And I'm wondering, is that something we could work into the variance?
So I've got a, actually, a question for Laura. So in this one, has the fence permit been granted already, or is it open?
Open. It's open. The fence permit was for a four-foot section of fence there.
Okay. But so, the fence, so when we grant a variance for fence height, do they didn't, does the homeowner then have to bring a new application for a fence?
Um.
So I'm trying, so I'm trying to address Michelle's issue, which is valid, but I'm wondering if there's a way to not have it in the variance, but have it in the application process?
I think you, you probably could do that, but, I mean, it's not that typical, but the zoning board has put conditions on their variances before. It's probably, I mean, I would say my recommendation would be to put the variance, put a condition on the variance that actually dictates the building permit.
So we could say, for instance, to replace it in like kind with what exists there now?
You could. I mean, you could leave it up to the building inspector, but it's stronger if you put it as a condition in the variance.
Mr. James, I mean, do, do you agree with me that the?
Yeah. Yeah, but you have to understand, like I explained, when I saw that pit, I got the first thing I could get, get and so and I, I don't want to leave it that way, but obviously it was getting, it was November nineteenth when I, when I laid that fence up and um, that's, I was like, they had anything. So yeah, of course I want to replace it because I don't, the thing, first of all, is like eight hundred pounds a piece, those are the ones, the ones we bought are light. So I would like to put the exact same that I have in the rest of the yard um in. It's just, but again? It was quick patch and for the moment.
And for whatever it's worth, Mr. Green and Mr. Hope may disagree with me, but I believe the current status of New York case law is pit bulls are by their nature and breed of a vicious propensity. It, it, it is by their nature and breed.
And I am the biggest dog lover there is. And I, there's just something about them. I volunteered at Mohawk Community Society. That's all they have.
Um, so, yeah, please, we'd love to hear from you, but please say your name.
Eileen James.
Yeah, I'm not agreeing or disagreeing because I actually, uh, I'm not up on my animal law.
I have to say, I don't know the answer to that either. I can tell you that the town in this unit does have a dangerous dog ordinance. But uh keep in mind that in order to enforce it, it's generally after something has happened.
Something has to happen.
So, and so our nature is proactive. Um, that's the whole goal. I don't anticipate, I don't hope, I hope not. But the reality is, is by me asking for this um, small variance is, is strictly proactive.
And it's not, it is, it is mainly the dog, but they have the kids as well that are in the driveway reaching over our fence. And if that, my dog, if he stands up, he's over, he's, he's my height. So they put their hands over, they, they antagonize the dog. If he's out barking, they're barking back at him. This is all just us protecting them in our situation, our animal.
And I believe the gentleman asked if I spoken yet. I'm kind of patient. I got a long fuse, even though I'm a relatively large looking fella, I've got a very long fuse. And I kind of sit back and I pick and choose before I say something. I'm not going to parent the gentleman's children or I'm going to tell him how to, he owns it, he's paying for his property. I'm not going to tell him what he should or shouldn't be doing until he encroaches enough on me that I'm going to push him back. So that's kind of my stance. And I don't want problem. We, we mind our business. We're forty-something, no children. We got seven cats and a mastiff. We mind our business. So we, you know? We don't, we're just kind of the way we are. So I don't want to come off because the last neighbor who they were friends with and now that he was kind of a pain and I had to push him off a little. And so I want to start with this guy in a nice foot, so I don't want to go right out and say-
There's already tension there from what they have told them.
So I don't want him to come out like, listen, this guy's telling me how to raise my kids already and all that good stuff. So I, like I said, we're sitting back and, and we just took that as a passive proactive measure just to provide a little extra security there for us, for both their dog and for their children with our dog reaching over.
Let me answer your question.
Mm-hmm.
And maybe I got it wrong.
Mm-hmm.
You haven't approached the neighbor and talked to him?
Not yet, it's waiting, she did a little bit.
When they first moved in-
Talk it to the mic?
Oh. When they first were moving in, it was almost like a house swap, like they were moving stuff out, they were moving stuff in. It was the craziest thing I've ever seen. But I said to the woman, I saw the dog running around the driveway and I said, oh, is that your dog? And she said, yes. I said, that's a pit bull, right? And she goes, yeah. I said, can that dog jump this four foot fence? And she said, well, yeah, if she wants to, she could. And that was it. And then we went, I told him, we went, we put the panels out. And then that was it.
It, it seems to me that I, I, I think if you went and saw your neighbors and kids are antagonizing your dog and your dog is this and this is that. I think if you went over and talked to the parents, uh, I know that neighborhood up there very well. There's some nice people up there, including you people. Um, maybe you don't have to go to all this expense.
Well, I think we got to get back to variance.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, are there other questions?
Yeah, any, anyone else have questions?
I, actually I do. Uh, if the board were to grant your request for a six foot fence? Could the pit bull jump the six foot fence?
In reality, absolutely. It prevent a little more challenge to it, but if the pit bull's pretty athletic, if it, if it wants you, it's coming. But like I said, it just provides a little deterrent.
I understand where you're going with that, but, but, right, I know, I understand. But my point is, is is, is it's still a deterrent. When the pit bull is you know, that far from something that it knows, it can just leap easily compared to much more, it may be a deterrent.
I, I understand the point you're trying to make and I do understand your concerns.
Do you have anything else you wish to add?
No, sir.
Any other questions from the board? Anyone in the audience wishes to be heard for or against the application?
We've got to ask. Part of the, I know you're looking around, but we got to ask anyway.
Hearing none, I would ask if anyone has a motion to make.
I will uh move to uh grant the variance. Um, uh, you have to understand with respect and you alluded to it yourself originally. Um, we're reluctant uh to uh grant six foot variances in general. Um, because typically there are alternative uh means that are feasible to accomplish the same ends. And I pointed some of them out to you. Although you, you know, indicated to me and pushed back and said that that would substantially uh restrict your use of your property, which I appreciate. Um, in general, we're looking for um uh, you know, in this particular circumstance, I think we're dealing with a unique situation in that you apparently have two man-eating dogs right next to each other. Um, and based upon that, it does seem uh reasonable to uh put the um length of six foot fence where you placed it. Um, in fact, uh, you, you indicated that you, you did keep some of the uh four, four and a half foot fence? Or the four foot fence uh up front? So you did already make an attempt to minimize um the application. Um, so for those reasons, I don't know that there's too many uh that uh the benefit you can uh the benefit can be achieved by other feasible means without restricting your use of your property. Um, I don't think that this particular um fence will have a undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. There's already a fence next door, although this one is going to be um a little farther forward, hence the need for the variance in the first instance. Um, I would, I would consider the variance um rather substantial. Um, however, I don't know that that is necessarily dispositive. Um, I don't know that there's going to be environmental effects um on the neighborhood. And while I do believe this is self-created, all of these requests for variances are self-created to a certain extent. I don't know that that outweighs the other factors in this particular uh situation and this being a unique uh case. Um, so for those reasons, I would um, I move to uh grant the variance.
I make a, a motion to amend.
Okay, so procedurally, we need, we need a second first and then make a motion to amend.
Okay.
So is there a second on the motion?
I'll second that motion, all the reasons stated.
The motion has been made and seconded. Is there a discussion?
I'd like to make a motion to amend. Um, I would like the granting of that motion to be conditional upon the property owners replacing the two fences that have been placed together along the area in question with a single six foot fence that matches the remainder of the fencing.
There's been a motion to amend. Is there a second to the motion to amend?
I will second that motion.
Motion to amend has been seconded. Is there a discussion on the motion to amend? I would ask that we call a vote. The first vote we take is on the motion to amend, not the underlying motion.
Mr. Frary?
Wait. That we're, right now, we're voting on whether or not the underlying motion should be amended.
Yes.
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Ms. Osterlich?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes, on the motion to amend.
Mr. Hope?
Yes.
Chairman Goodman?
Yes, on the motion to amend. The motion before us has now been amended. Is there discussion, further discussion on the amended motion? Hearing none, I would ask if we could call the roll.
Mr. Frary?
First of all, let me say that what, what you did with this diagram is probably the most, I don't know what you do at Knowles, but it is probably the most thorough and, and informative thing we've probably-
That's with everything, not just that.
I would agree.
I, I, I got to tell you, this, this left little doubt about what you were seeking, so thank you for that. I, I'm going to vote yes on the motion. Um I, I rarely vote yes on six foot fence motions. I actually think this is a minimal request. I understand that you could put the, the six foot panels from where your six foot fence on the property line ends and take it to the corner of your house. But then what you now create is the need to remove fencing and you lose a portion of your backyard, which is the purpose of having the fence. Um, I'm hopeful that by putting the six foot fence permanently in as it's been amended? It will certainly look better. I think it will be consistent with what is there in the neighborhood. Um, and I think it's probably hopefully going to serve your purpose. I don't know that feasibly without impacting, as Mr. Hope said, impacting the use of your yard, you could do this in another way. And I certainly applaud you for being proactive. Unfortunately, usually what happens is, is everything is reactive and we have people that put the fence up permanently and, and then come and say, geez, I didn't know. So I appreciate your uh, your efforts to be proactive. For those reasons, the reasons stated, I'm going to vote yes.
Mr. Latif?
Uh, I'm going to vote yes and I'd like to add a couple things. Uh this could have been achieved by putting the six foot in the back of the house. Uh, but uh since the applicant is being proactive and they admitted that it's possibly their dog or the other dog, it could be a problem for the kids and so on. And I don't want to look in the news someday and regret voting the, the other way if something was to happen. So uh going back to the fence could have been put in the back of the house, six foot and leaving the four and that would have worked too. Uh, but uh looking at the property, I drove by it. It is, the character of the neighborhood is already a mess with all these fences. Uh, going down Van Antwerp, it does not look good. And someday, somebody will see all those fences the way they are. But I agree uh with Mr. Frary, being proactive is a good thing to do. And also uh, good job on the diagram.
Ms. Osterlich?
I vote yes, and I do want to comment that I, I appreciate your concern over the safety of your, of your family.
That's all it is, the safety.
I do understand that.
Mr. Daley?
I'll vote yes, and this, this is unique, very unique. And I'll vote yes for the safety and for all the reasons stated.
Mr. Green?
Uh, yes, let the record reflect it is a site visit. And you know, every change is, is to a certain extent a change, but I don't think this change as approved under these circumstances will be an undesirable change in the neighborhood. I wish you luck and your neighbors peace.
Mr. Hope? Chairman Goodman?
I will vote yes on the motion. And I want to thank you for your time tonight. And I would ask if there's any other business to come before the board?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I wanted to remind you guys that uh we already know that we don't have cases for the March meeting. So we have um, we have canceled the March meeting. They have to be in by the fifteenth of February, so um, and I also wanted to recognize that Mr. Latif got an educational award from Saratoga Planning Commission.
Oh, you got to talk into Mike, I can't.
Uh, Mr. Latif got an educational award at the Saratoga Commission.
Congratulations.
For being um so good at, at, at his um training and, and-
Did he educate them or?
No, I think it's because he's taken, they keep track of how many credits and classes and the levels of classes. So they have different levels of difficulty on their education, their continuing education for planning board members and he's moved, he's had enough classes and moved up the ranks to have been given an educational award. So Linda got him a little treat.
I just showed him the certificate and I told him why I have the cake.
I was going to say, next time he brings dessert, he's bringing it on.
I'm willing to share.
I know now. Zoning board emeritus.
And, and so no March meeting, just to reiterate.
Well, thank you. Thank you for the cake too.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
I want to thank everyone tonight and we'll see you in April.